Work session of Mayor and Council to order, and then we'll begin. Let me just start out by saying that Councilwoman McPherson will not be here tonight for the work session or the regular session. She has an illness and will not be here, but today is her birthday, so we want to wish her well for her illness and also happy birthday. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move into this. I'm going to just warn you right up front that this is a long agenda, and I mean to move through it because this is the biggest one I've had so far. So I'm going to start out, A, governing body. I'm going to read each of these items, and then I'm going to try to move them on to the consent agenda if there are no objections. A1, appointment of Councilman Matthew Montahan to the Villarica Development Authority to replace Councilman Danny Carter. Are there any objections to placing this item on the consent agenda?
No objection.
Item A2, appointment of Councilman Michael Young to the Downtown Development Authority to replace Councilman Matthew Montahan. Are there any objections to placing this item on the consent agenda?
No objection.
Item A3, appointment of Tom Flowers to the Villarica Development Authority to replace Deborah Matthews. Are there any objections to this being placed on the consent agenda?
No objection.
Item A4, reappointments to the Villarica Development Authority. A, John Mount. B, Dale Schwarzkopf, for the terms indicated. Are there any objections to placing this item on the consent agenda?
No objection.
Item A5, reappointment of Cheryl Bell to the Library Advisory Board. Are there any objections?
No objection.
Item A6, appointment of Nancy Memes to the Library Advisory Board. Are there any objections?
No objection.
Item A7, we will move this to the work session for next month, Madam Clerk, and we'll move past that. All right, we were able to move a third of that, and let's get on with it. Tab B, community development. Item 1, amendment to the Villarica zoning ordinance, residential subdivision design guidelines in public hearing, which we will take up in the regular session following this tonight at 6:00. Chris Montesinos, go ahead.
This is a carryover from the January council meeting. We wanted to ensure that it was properly posted, which it had been, but I wasn't quite sure, so I wasn't going to make any assumptions. This is, again, just a continuation.
Is that mic on?
Yes, I'm sorry to speak up.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, this is a carryover from the January city council meeting. We wanted to make sure that this had been properly posted and advertised, which it was originally, but I wasn't 100% sure, but we wanted to carry it over to this council meeting.
Okay. Council members, we did discuss this one at the last meeting. Would you like, Chris, to briefly describe it again or discuss it again, or do you have any questions?
The objections that I had to it have been removed.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so this item will not be placed on the consent agenda, but we'll take it up in a public hearing at 6 o'clock tonight. Let's move on to B2, amendment to the Villarica sign ordinance, suspended single-post signs. Also will have a public hearing tonight at 6:00. Go ahead, Chris.
Again, this is another carryover from the January council meeting. This is to allow single-post suspended signs in the CMU, ONI, and AG zoning districts.
All right, council members, are there any questions on this item? If there are no questions, this item will remain as B2. We'll take it up at 6 o'clock tonight for a public hearing. Item B3, amendment to the Villarica zoning ordinance, postal service delivery and collection structures. There'll also be a public hearing on this item. Chris?
Carryover again from the January council meeting. This is addressing a requirement from the US Postal Service that maximizes the design criteria for the mandate for centralized postal collection.
Okay. Council, anyone have any questions on this item?
Chris, I ran through this, and I still don't understand how the ordinance that's there keeps it from looking blighted, rusted, littered. I'm a little concerned about, I don't know, maybe you have some anecdotal evidentiary from your friend in Texas who's lived with this, he can explain how you keep this thing looking good.
I think the conversation that we had about that required the neighborhood to have an HOA, I'm sorry, required the neighborhood to have an HOA if they would include the maintenance of those structures. This is really kind of a mandate from the federal government and the post office down to the local government, which is, in my opinion, not appropriate, but nevertheless, we have instituted or are trying to institute new standards that bring the postal service level up to a higher standard as far as design and location and maintenance of these facilities. We're just trying to, where the USPS is mandating that these be put in by developers, we want to ensure that there are quality assurances that are hopefully tried to be implemented through this regulation.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, hearing none. This item is also scheduled for a public hearing, so we will take this up at 6 o'clock tonight. Let's move on to B4, fee schedule revision for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits. Mr. Bobby Elliott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For years and years and years, probably the last 20 years, Villarica's MEPs, we call them, mechanical, electrical, plumbing permit fees have been based on thresholds. For example, the electrical, you know, for $45 for the first 200 amp service and then et cetera, et cetera. The industry today is atomizing these fees. And in your packet, your fee schedules that are attached, we researched the city of Douglasville, Carrollton, Powder Springs, Canton, Woodstock, and Acworth to get an idea of what everybody was charging. Based on those, we came up with an average, and that's what you're seeing on the schedule. We recommend approval. Like I say, it's the cost on a residential, typical residential house will be an extra $250, and for commercial, it depends on how big and what it is.
Okay.
But we're losing revenues based on what we're charging right now.
I understand. Council, do you have any questions?
My, I addressed this with Bobby before the meeting, but my concern was the homeowner that wants to do his own work on his own house and stuff like that. Bobby assures me that that's still allowed as long as it passes inspection.
Yes, sir, that is absolutely correct.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I think it's obvious that the cost of actually performing the inspections has gone up over the years.
Yes, sir.
So this fee increase simply reflects the fact that mechanical, electrical, and plumbing needs to be inspected by a qualified person, and the cost needs to be reimbursed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there are no objections, I will make this consent item 7.
No objection.
Thank you.
No objection.
All right, let's move to B5, ordinance to revise Section 400 of the City of Villarica Development Regulations, Section 403.11, wastewater lift stations. Mr. Elliott.
Mr. Mayor, we still don't have a refined recommendation for council on this item.
Okay. Want me to carry it over?
We can carry it over, yes, sir. We recommend carry it over. Table it again.
All right. In the regular session, I'll ask someone to modify the agenda to move this item to the next council meeting. All right, let's move on to B6, update on the status of the Villarica Livable Centers Initiative Study. Chris Montesinos, I believe you gave us a little handout.
I did. Good afternoon, and I want to mention to the members in the audience and the public that we have officially kicked off the Livable Centers Initiative Community Engagement Program, which is a portion of the project. There is a LCI, or Livable Centers Initiative, website linked to the city's website on the main page, as well as a link within that page to a survey which seeks to get community input on a variety of topics related to downtown and the Fullerville Mill District. The handout that I have provided you that is also available in the lobby provides a link to the survey, and it's important that we seek the input of citizens as we establish priorities and identify projects that would be appropriate for implementation with the LCI. I have a quick presentation moving to show you. It's about a minute and a half. This was a rendering that we've done, a scale model of downtown, and we have superimposed streetscape improvements as well as pedestrian improvements, and this shows basically what we could potentially become. And you'll note that Temple Street is one-way. We've narrowed the road there, extended the sidewalks out to create more of a pedestrian dining area off to the side.
I didn't think the whole Bishop Center was going to be a bridal venue. There was a bride on the corner of the...
Takes all stripes. This is next to Hickstown. I think Jan, I mentioned that you guys used to do concerts down there at this little venue on the left. We put a wrought iron fence along the railroad as well as the trade-off there to put in streetlights and some additional pedestrian streetscaping. Street trees, I think, make the world of difference in this case. This little plaza we built out by narrowing the right way. The bridge was inspired by one that was done with an LCI project in Acworth, which we will be touring their town in May. The center of 78 up here is further broken down and reduced in width and bifurcated by a pedestrian island for traffic calming. The little side street off to the left there where the Carter Center Tavern is, is turned into a flex space for, that can be blockaded off with bollards for special events. It's got a special treatment on the ground to separate from the pavement.
The thing that just went by is that...
That was Butterball.
Butterball, I thought it looked like Butterball.
Yeah, it didn't quite make the list on the plannings, the portion that I've been working on. This project's taken me about, off and on, about three weeks to put together, but everything is to scale and really intended to give you an idea of how the aesthetic improvements and changes at the roadway, the streetscapes can really make a difference in how downtown functions and how it looks. So I thought it would be nice to just kind of share that vision with you in the spirit of the LCI kickoff.
I didn't see the minor stature anywhere. Is there a place for it?
As a matter of fact, I put it in this little plaza that we drove by.
All right, I appreciate that. Is this available on the website?
I just finished this like 10 minutes ago, so...
Can we make it available on the website? All right, let's do that. Joel, did you show this on the, okay, very good.
All right, thank you all.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Chris, one question. In the brochure that's attached to the agenda item on the LCI, it doesn't specifically say that the Renaissance Plan, the Trail Plan, all the other work we've done is folded into this. All of those, that past work we've done is part of this LCI, right?
To an extent, yes, it is. I mean, this is basically taking, everything's been done in the past and compounding it further and stitching it all together into one larger plan. The Renaissance Plan was just for downtown, and this plan goes all the way out to Fullerville and beyond.
Okay.
So we want to look at sort of a greater area and how we connect Mirror Lake, how we connect to Fullerville, and make everything in between walkable and identifiable. It's really going to be a tremendous project for the city in the next 10, 15 years.
Okay.
Okay. Is this item on the regular agenda?
It doesn't need to be. I just wanted to provide that.
I just want to know if it is. If it is, then I may ask you to narrate that, and we may show it again in the regular session tonight. Okay, any other questions for Chris? All right, let's go ahead and move on. Thank you, Chris. Let's go to B7, relocation of sanitary sewer from existing library lift station to a private lift station at Southeastern Trans, which is a new facility. Mr. Elliott.
Mr. Mayor, I hope I don't confuse you, I hope I don't confuse myself with this, but let me give you just a little history. We've got a small lift station that serves our library. It was put in when the library was built new, and with that lift station, there's a small force main that pumps sewer from the station out across 61 into a gravity manhole that goes to another station and down the line. When Southeast Trans brought their plans in, the elevations of their finished floor were going to be lower than what the elevation is at the lift station at the library. So they're going to have to put their own lift station in, and they wanted to put their lift station in and install a new force main from their station out across 61. We can't have a private force main on public property, but we're getting ready to go into that in just a couple of minutes. But we looked at two or three different things. The sanitary sewer from Southeast Trans will not gravity feed over to the lift station at the library, so we could pump it from their new lift station over to the library. We did that, the library station wouldn't have to be grossly improved. So what we looked at doing was, okay, I asked them, I said, "All right, let's do this. Let's gravity feed sewer from the library lift station over to your new lift station, and you connect your force main into the force main that is now at the library going across 61, and we would still maintain that as in perpetuity down the road." They agreed to do that. So their pipeline contractor is on site now, and it's time to get that installed. We got a price for $21,700 from that particular contractor. Go ahead and do that, which is a good price based on the fact that they're on site, they're already working. If we bid that, we're probably looking at 30 grand, but the bottom line, we have budgeted dollars to do this, and it takes out a lift station. The library lift station will be removed. So I thought that was, yeah, technically, it's not completely kosher on how we did it, but it was the best thing we could do based on what we had. So that's my recommendation.
Okay. So essentially, we'll take out the smaller lift station that we own and maintain at the library, then we'll gravity feed what was in that lift station being pumped out now to gravity feed over to the privately-owned lift station at Southeast Trans.
And then it will be pumped through our existing force main.
Right. But what is our assurance that that lift station continues to be maintained if it's not in our control?
That's the only caveat.
Well, that seems like a big one.
They're going to be required to have a backup generator, et cetera, et cetera, for their facility. Short of their facility closing completely, I don't think it'll be a problem in the future.
What will we do with the existing lift station? Will it stay there? Will you dismantle it?
The small station at the library, we will, this contract price, they will take that station out. It's a package station. Set it on a trailer for us, and we can use it wherever we need to.
Okay. But in a worst-case scenario, if we needed to go back to that?
Yes.
We would be able to do that?
Yes.
All right, council, does anybody have any? Mr. Young?
Is there any option to roll this into that Section 400 revision of the water and sewer lift stations ordinance to, so that we don't have a private lift station out there?
Well, based on the conditions that we have and the elevations that we're dealing with, the only other option is to install another larger public station and let them pump to ours, and then we pump from there. We just, if we can get a chance, take a chance to take out a station, that's, you know, even though it's a small station, it's a station that we have to maintain.
All right.
Similar to Michael's question, I mean, I guess if you look at the Tanner complex over there and the potential for expansion over there, how does that play into, I mean, will those, any future development over there also tie into that lift station?
No.
So, I mean, it seems like, well, what is, what serves the Tanner complex currently? Is there another lift station nearby?
The hospital station is on in behind the hospital. It's probably 600, 700, 800 feet from there, and it's further down gradient than that.
And it's also a private lift station as well?
It is.
Okay. I mean, I kind of echo the mayor's kind of thoughts, I think. Where he was going was that I would probably almost would prefer to have a public option out there instead of a private one, especially if it's going to start serving neighboring parcels and such. Is that just not feasible for that whole area?
The station that Southeast Trans is installing is going to be solely for their facility and if approved, the library. Those will be the only two that'll ever be tied onto it.
So the rest of the development that eventually will come in around that Tanner property will not end up on that Southeast Trans?
That is correct.
Lift station. Okay.
Is that the right decision?
It's my recommendation, based on what we have.
Well, I'm just saying, if there was a public lift station that serviced the basin area, the whole basin...
Without a doubt, that would be my choice.
So what is stopping us from doing that?
Well, I would think adding another lift station, number one, but two, the cost...
Well, then Southeast Trans wouldn't need one. They would pay a portion of the public one, and the library would tap into that, and maybe at some point even Tanner would pay a portion of the public one, or, you know, or the other developments would pay a portion of the public one, just like we were going to consider in B5.
I see exactly what you're saying. That situation would fit this as well, to be honest with you. I didn't look that deep into it.
Is it implementable in the timeframe we have, or is Southeast Trans going too fast to do that?
They're probably, I don't know, 75 days out from needing to flush a toilet, so to speak, so I'm not sure it's doable, but we can look into it.
Well, it sounds like you just said a few minutes ago that they're out there on site now, really at a spot where they need to make decisions.
Well, they need to go ahead and install some gravity sewer while the pipe crew is there. I mean, it's going to be a while before they get the building up.
Can you ballpark the cost of...
I could, but I'd be afraid to at the podium.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, given that, it just, it feels to me like this is not the worst idea, it's not the best, but I think that it serves a purpose. Council, does anybody else have any concerns with this?
I would just say, I mean, I don't have any issue with obviously, you know, reducing a lift station, but, you know, I think when we're looking at things like this, the objective should be to kind of minimize future lift stations. Think about future development, and so...
Well, there's no question, and when you think about what Mr. Young is talking about, which, you know, is what we've been talking about for the last few months about the entire basin and the cost-sharing, I mean, this is not in line with that. But I'm thinking that you're going to tell me that if you were going to give me a ballpark, it'd be three times the cost of what this is here, and I'm not sure that it would have any, even if Southeast Trans participated in the cost of that, it seems like it would still be very costly.
The cost to install a public-sized lift station to carry everything else available would be more than three or four times what we're talking here.
Okay. Whose phone is that?
Sorry, it's mine.
Okay.
Is this a temporary fix or a permanent fix?
Well, I'm thinking it'd be a permanent fix.
Well, it's a permanent fix unless something goes wrong. I mean, that's really what you're saying, right?
And I'll say this, it's not, it's not a good idea to run public stormwater to a private lift station. This thing is cutting in and out. It's just not a good idea because we lose control over, something happens, the owner shuts the building down, closes up, you've got a lift station sitting there, is it going to be running? Is it, you know?
We need it to run for the library.
Yes, that is correct. That's why it's not a good idea to do that, but based on what we've got and the elevations that they've got out there, $21,700 is not a ton of money to be able to handle that, even if we have to do something else down the road.
Yeah, I was saying, it might be better if this was, we call this a temporary fix until we fix it the way we really want it later on, because I think we're aimed in a different direction with the rest of the city.
I think the fact that we can revert back if we need to is really the key here. It's not like we lose that ability. So I'd be willing to move on with this, and, you know, with certainly the understanding that this is not our preferred method. I know it's not yours, you've said it, so...
Mayor, we can even, we can even leave that station in the ground and just bypass it, and then re-crank it if we have to, you know, instead of taking it out, just leave it and bypass it.
Yeah, I think if we don't have another use for it, then it makes sense to leave it over there for now. There's no need to put it on a trailer and haul it somewhere and leave it. Okay, if there are no more questions, I'm going to try to make this consent 8. Are there any objections?
None.
All right. I'm going to move on now, thank you, Bobby, to tab C, Police Department. Item 1, C1 is purchase 47 ballistic helmets from Safewear. Michael Mansour. Come on down with your Tasmanian devil tie. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are y'all?
Very good.
Good. So this is the rest of the equipment that we raised the money for. We did the fundraising and raised the money for the equipment, basically the active shooter equipment, and these are the helmets that we're requesting to purchase with that money.
All right. Council, does anyone have any questions for this?
No, this sounds like an easy one since y'all raised the money.
Chief, you opted for the mid helmet instead of the full helmet. Is there any advantage weight-wise or protection-wise to the mid over the full?
I think that's a question Hunter would answer, because he did all of the homework on this, and also I don't mind if he'd answer that one.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good question. So the weight would be, you know, really a negligible change, but what we allowed the officers to do, they're going to have to be the ones who wear the equipment and, you know, don it and doff it and quickly as need be. So we looked at the options for the helmets, and the mid cut really is what most everyone wanted. We had a couple that wanted high cut, a couple low cut, but we believe let those who are going to wear it make a selection as well.
Sounds fair to me. All right, any other questions? If not, I'm going to make this C9 if there are no objections.
None.
All right, I'm going to move on. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Hunter. Let's get on over to tab D, Parks and Recreation Leader Services with our new director, Tracy Ivey. Item D1, purchase equipment for filter... Item D one, purchase equipment for filter room at Gold Dust Splash Pad. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Uh, if you recall, we had several deduct items from our general contractor's, um, contract for the, uh, construction of the splash pad, uh, and the purchase of the filter room equipment was one of those deducts. So what we're doing today is proposing to select a vendor, uh, for that acquisition. And, um, that would be to make a motion to, if you could push that down a little bit, to authorize the purchase for filter room equipment from Aquatic Consulting and Equipment for the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars.
Wow, I like how you tried to move us through that really fast. That's really my job.
Sorry.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, the only one I had was you bid it, but then you took some stuff out.
Yes, sir. Uh, we bid it and we took the UV equipment out because the Carroll County Health Department requirement for the plumbing, uh, that system would not help us based on their requirements.
Okay.
So we were able to save some money there as well.
And the, the competitive bidding was, they were still the.
They were still the best. Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions? If not, if there are no objections, I'm going to make this C ten.
No objection.
All right, D two, purchase of shade structures for splash pad at Gold Dust Park. Go ahead.
Uh, the second of several of the deducts, uh, was to remove the shade structures from the general contract. Uh, we will be purchasing four cantilever-style shade structures for the, uh, for the new facility. And we are proposing to, uh, contract that with, uh, let's see.
Shade America.
Yes, absolutely. They had the best price and, uh, there was, uh, they, they made a diff- another account.
Hold on a second.
Bliss Products.
Bliss Products was, Bliss Products was for, for the shade structures. We had a third contractor that never responded to the request to bid. So, uh, Bliss Products is the.
It is Bliss Products, I'm sorry.
Bliss Products, that's okay. Uh, and they, uh, they do a lot of equipment. They do playground equipment. They do benches, picnic tables. They do, they do a full gamut of, uh, park amenities. So, uh, I've dealt with them in the past and, uh, they're a good company. They're located in Carrollton, Georgia. I'm sorry, they're located in, uh, Lithia Springs, Georgia.
Lithia Springs, Georgia. Shade America actually was about, looks like fifteen hundred dollars or seventeen hundred dollars more.
Just a shade, just a shade higher.
Just a shade, just a shade.
I like that.
All right, there any questions? All right, if there are no questions, I'm going to make this C eleven. No objections, actually. All right, D three, purchase of metal shelter for splash pad at Gold Dust Park. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, this is another of the deducts, and basically this is just what it says. It's a metal shelter. It has a, uh, it's a metal hip roof shelter, uh, with, uh, metal or steel, uh, legs or posts in the ground. They'll be concreted in the ground. That'll be part of the, the facility. This will require, uh, very little post, so we have more shade coverage. These are really neat for, uh, a multitude of venues, but in particular pools and aquatic facilities, so you have less things coming out of the ground for obstructions and that kind of thing. So, uh, we moved to select, uh, RCP shelters for the acquisition of the, uh, the metal shelters.
All right, counsel, any questions? If there are no questions, I'm going to make this C twelve.
In, in the future, I would mind seeing a picture of these things included in our package.
Okay. I did print some today, uh, and between the meetings, I could, I could show you some of the photographs, in particular the shelter.
Okay.
Uh, there was one in Douglasville, Georgia that the same company, uh, our, our general contractor did. So I went over there and took some pictures of that. So, uh, very simple structure, uh, will give us a lot of use, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so that, uh, is going to be C twelve, and let's move on to D four. Approved vendor for baseball softball, softball and football athletic uniforms. Go ahead.
Yes, this is an annual housekeeping thing we do. Uh, this year we, uh, received quotes from, uh, we, two responsive bidders. We had one that did not completely respond. If you'll go to table one, you'll see that, uh, Gables Sporting Goods will be awarded. Uh, we would recommend award Gables Sporting Goods for the purchase of our baseball, softball and football attire for our kids this year.
Now, you haven't been here with us, but you've been in the, in the area and used Gables, I'm sure, in your previous role. It seems to me that we've used Gables almost every year. Is that pretty much what the records show?
It is.
Okay.
It is, and, and I've used them because of their pricing. Uh, another good thing for Gables is if you have a jersey that comes back with a, a bad ju- a number printed on it, you can very easily go take that and swap it. You don't have to send it anywhere, wait for it to come back in the mail and, and.
I got it.
So it's just overall a good fit, and they, they have good pricing.
Customer service is always a big deal.
It's very important.
All right, counsel, any questions?
None.
All right, if there are no objections, I'm going to make this C thirteen. All right, D five, approved vendor for soccer athletic uniforms. Go ahead.
Uh, similar to what we just talked about, uh, we only had one contractor, uh, or one bidder respond to our soccer uniforms. Apparently there's only one company that wants to deal with Villa Rica with soccer, but they do a very good job on the uniforms. I've seen the, the, the jersey and the short, uh, and their price was the same for the adults and the co- uh, and the players as well. So, uh, Crown Sports is the recommended vendor for our soccer athletic uniforms.
Now, I recall seeing this vendor before. Do you know who we used last year or the year before?
Uh, not sure about nineteen.
Okay.
Uh, but I believe it was Crown.
Yeah, for some reason that looked familiar to me. All right, counsel, any questions?
No.
All right, I'm going to make this C fourteen. All right, and that wraps it up for you, Tracy.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, tab E, Public Works, uh, item one, this is going to be Nick. Item one, HVAC replacement at City Hall. How are you, Nick?
I'm doing well. How are you guys?
Very good. Go ahead.
Glad to be here. All right, uh, keep it kind of simple. All three of these HVAC replacement projects are budgeted. The first one would be to fully, to have all of our HVAC systems at City Hall on the new type refrigerant and also replace the furnaces. We've already had to replace two of the outdoor units and indoor coils last year. Um, it was, uh, emergency-type purchase when they failed. So this is kind of cleaning up the, the remaining systems. So we'll have a total of four furnaces being replaced and then two outdoor systems and two indoor coils. Uh, like I said, it is budgeted. KBS came in, uh, eight thousand dollar, or eight thousand, four hundred dollars under budget for this particular project.
Well, so are you talking only about City Hall right now?
Yes.
So there they have three units?
Four, they have four systems total. Last year, we had to replace two of the outdoor systems and indoor coils. We didn't touch any of the furnaces because they were functional and compatible with the upgrades to the four-ten. Didn't really have anything to do with each other, but I would like to replace those furnaces as well because they are up there in age.
Okay, and then, and, and also two or one of the outside units?
Two outdoor units, two indoor coils, and then four furnaces.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions on, this is on the City Hall HVAC replacement? All right, if not, I'm going to make this C fifteen. Go ahead with HVAC replacement at customer service. Nick?
Since occupying this building, um, last year, we have had numerous amounts of issues, not numerous amounts. We've had quite a few, um, issues with the existing HVAC system there. It is on our, the old type R twenty-two refrigerant as well. Um, it's a smaller system, uh, being only four-ton. It was budgeted and KBS bid seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars to replace the entire system.
All right, any questions for Nick on the replacement at the customer service building? All right, I'm going to make that C sixteen. All right, let's get to E three, HVAC replacement at Gold Dust Park.
I'm excited about this one. This is Gold Dust, um, and we're making our way to be completely on the new type refrigerant with all of our HVAC systems there. This is a budgeted item, but we did go over budget because I tried to squeeze in a third that we didn't initial, initially plan on replacing. Um, it is the, the third, all three of these systems, I highly recommend replacing. They're all old, uh, on R twenty-two. And the, the deal with these systems is that the air handlers are in the ceiling, are in the drop ceiling, and the outdoor units are on the roof. So it, the issues that I've had right now are two of the air handlers have the evaporator cords up, or coils that are about rusted through. When those get clogged and when they get old, they're not as efficient moving coolant through them or refrigerant through them. And so when they get clogged, they start to condensate quite a bit. The pans can't keep up with how much condensation that, that evaporator is producing, so then it drips on the ceiling tile. We got to replace ceiling tiles, vacuum out the, the pan, et cetera. So this is really preventative, and if we, if this project is approved, we will only have one remaining unit that's on, um, R twenty-two.
Okay, so, but this takes you over budget by four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars?
That is correct, and I've asked, um, Sarah if we could possibly use, if you guys agree, the savings from the City Hall project.
Okay. All right, counsel, any questions on this one?
No questions.
With no questions, I'm going to make this C seventeen if there are no objections.
No objection.
Thank you, Nick. Let's go to tab F, Utilities. Pete Zerbanos, number one, emergency replacement of Bay Springs Lift Station Pump Number One. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Um, pump number one of Bay Spring, Bay Springs Lift Station has reached its, uh, life expectancy, uh, with, uh, bearing failure, motor failure. And, um, we had to go ahead and place the order. Uh, we're, we're having, uh, an extended lead time when we have to order these pumps, uh, because of COVID and, and getting, uh, equipment to us for replacement. So, um, we went ahead and ordered this in an emergency situation. I haven't received the pump yet. It should be here next week, but, uh, the request is for the emergency replacement, uh, for this particular pump.
All right, got you. Any questions on this? All right, I'm going to make this C eighteen. Uh, it's an emergency replacement. There's not, there's not a lot to talk about. All right, thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Let's go to tab G, Finance, uh, Ms. Sarah Andrews, item one, fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments. Numbers fifty-eight through seventy-two. Go ahead. Good afternoon. How are you?
Good. How are y'all? All right, so yes, these are the fiscal year twenty-one budget amendments. The first item, it was brought to council last meeting. This is for the hard armor plate vests that the police department has raised money for. This amount that I'm amending, this is the amount of money that was raised in fiscal year twenty twenty. So this is last fiscal year, so it wasn't used, so it was rolled into fund balance. So this budget amendment takes it out of fund balance so they can spend that money on the vest this year. So that's fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The next item is also with the police department. At the end of the fiscal year, they had a couple open purchase orders for rain jackets and T-shirts for the officers. So again, that was an expense that was budgeted, didn't get used, so those savings rolled into fund balance. So now we're taking it back out of fund balance to spend it in the current fiscal year. So that's five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars for those two items. The next item is for Graddock Communications. So kind of about the time, maybe slightly after, we had already gotten into the budget process, um, we decided to start changing how we, um, livestreamed the council meetings. So that is more expensive than what we had in the budget originally. So I'm asking for the council to take the money out of contingency. So this is ten thousand, eight hundred dollars for what was, the increase to what was budgeted for the old system, um, in this fiscal year. So, um, again, take it out of the contingency in the council's budget and increase the technical line item.
Let me ask you a question. How much money remains in the contingency? Do you know that?
I don't think we've spent anything yet.
I don't think we put much in there.
How much was in there?
Those items, those.
Yeah, we, I want to say we had sixty to seventy thousand, so.
Okay, all right, and this is the first time we've spent any money out of that contingency fund?
In this fiscal year.
All right, Mr. Carter, you have a question?
No problem.
Anybody else have a question? All right, I'm going to make this, uh, consent number nineteen if there are no objections.
Did you want me to go through the rest of them?
Oh, did I? See, I'm looking at, uh, I'm actually looking at this one. I thought we were at the end.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I actually do, but, but we'll still do that. Go ahead.
We'd like to see where the rest of it's coming from.
I was watching.
Okay, uh, the next item is HVAC at the old library. Nick brought this last time. This was an emergency replacement of the HVAC system at the old library. So, um, we're spending it out of Carroll County Sploes, and we have, um, we had over a hundred, I think we had a hundred thousand dollars budgeted in meters in Carroll County Sploes, so I'm taking that from this. So we're moving thirteen thousand, ten dollars to Carroll County Sploes buildings for the library. Next item is the roll-up door at Avanti. Again, this was a item from last meeting. So we, we were able to take the money from maintenance and repair of buildings, but this is really capital in nature, so I'm moving it to capital. So ten thousand, five hundred dollars. The next item, again, this was from last meeting. Nick presented hiring somebody to do the plumbing at the, uh, Welcome Center slash Avante building. Um, however, we were kind of pulling funds, funds from other places because it went over what we originally budgeted. So this is combining it into the one line item. So, uh, we had originally twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted. We need nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars more. Um, and Nick was able to find that within maintenance and repair of buildings, so.
Correct.
We're just combining that. And lastly is the item that Nick just presented where the one HVAC is over by about five thousand dollars. So we're moving it from one Sploes item to the other Sploes item.
Okay, I have the same answer for that. It's going to be items, uh, consent C nineteen, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to G two, fiscal year twenty twenty budget amendments, numbers one, eleven through one twelve. Go ahead.
All right, this, yes, this is for last fiscal year, which we are about wrapping up with the audit. And, um, you know, it takes us a couple of months to wrap up a fiscal year. There are, we usually spend about two months or sixty days looking at receipts and putting those into the prior year. Same thing with expenses. If it had to do with, um, if the good or service was received before year end, then we book that back to the prior year. So all that being said, once the fiscal year finally kind of, uh, washed out for solid waste, we were about thirteen thousand dollars. We had a net loss of about thirteen thousand dollars. And then went to make some of the year-end entries, which includes depreciation. And I had an unpleasant surprise to find that depreciation was about twenty thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted. So this brought our net loss for solid waste fund for fiscal year twenty twenty to thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. So last year, when I came to council, um, we'd been carrying a loss, you know, over, we have improved our, our financial standing for solid waste fund by raising rates and things. Um, the problem is this is just a small budget with one department. There's not much room for error. So, um, anyway, last year, council approved us writing off a two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar loss that had built up over year, over the years, that we were, we're just never going to make enough profit over the, over a few years to make that up. And the, the auditors recommended that we write that off. Write that off, meaning, um, general fund transferred enough money to cover that. So, um, so in this case, this year, we did take a loss of thirty-three thousand dollars. So I'm asking council to do the same thing where we would transfer, you know, kind of the, the general fund is, is going to supplement the solid waste fund by this amount. So I'm asking to increase, uh, transfer by thirty-five thousand dollars. So we have to increase the revenue on solid waste side and increase the, the expense on the general fund side.
But you're saying twenty thousand dollars of this is depreciation?
Yes, so right at the end of the fiscal year, um, fiscal year nineteen, we added three, um, dump trucks to this, uh, line item. We've also added a compacting truck, a compactor truck. So with the addition of those, um, items, the depreciation, I should have budgeted more.
I was going to say, Matt, we need to look at this at budget time because we really shouldn't have a surprise, uh, like this.
Right.
I would, certainly not for depreciation, I wouldn't think.
Right.
All right, counsel, does anybody have any questions on this?
And to, to your point, depreciation is not cash. That is not cash that went out. However, it does affect the bottom line.
So we have a thirty-three-point-seven-thousand-dollar loss, but we were transferring thirty-five thousand?
Yes, I do expect that the auditors will come back, um, with like a pit, they, they adjust our pension liability and things, so I, I've kind of rounded it up. If you want to wait till we get the final, well, we can't. The problem is I need to submit this because they're trying to wrap up the audit. So if I wait till next month, we're going to be too far out with the audit, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
None.
All right, if there are no objections, I'm going to make this C twenty. All right, let's go to G three, write-off customer receivables. Go ahead, Sarah.
All right. Okay, let me, all right, so we, I'm asking, uh, council to approve, and there is a list, this is a three-page list of the, the accounts that need to be written off, uh, but basically it's a hundred and sixty-one accounts totaling thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. This is, you can see the, the trend from the last three times that council has proven, approved write-offs. Um, so I, I've compared it to what revenue is, and we're looking at point three-nine percent of our revenue. And, um, I know we'd like to see this continue to decrease, but I have to say this is a really, really good number. Um, I, the finance committee met this morning and I was showing them where we were, um, back in, I guess, before that, the thirty-one thousand dollar write-off that I'm showing there. So, um, in twenty seventeen, we wrote off about ninety-five thousand dollars. And that was for a couple of years, but that was point seven or so percent of revenue. So you, you can see we've come, we have decreased almost in half since then. Um, and I have to say, um, the biggest change is what the council approved in April of twenty eighteen when we increased the deposit amounts. That has made the biggest change, uh, but also cutting off more frequently. And so to see it, even though it's very minor compared to last year, the, the decrease, we saw, um, a, a decrease despite the pandemic, and we didn't cut anybody off from March to July. So I have to say, um, the deposits are. So I have to say, the deposits are working, and cutting off more frequently is working when we are cutting off, so.
So, well, I, I do think, my first concern was that, that cycle billing that we put in place, the raising the deposits, I expected to see a, a better decrease than this, but I'm glad that you pointed out that during COVID, we did not turn anybody's water off, and that obviously had an impact. And so I think we still did quite well, considering that, that we did suspend cutoffs during that time. All right, council, do you have any questions?
I got one.
All right, Mr. Carter.
One of the items on here is more than three thousand dollars. What was that?
Yes, we actually spoke about that in the finance committee meeting. That was, that was, yes, he's saying there's one of the one hundred and sixty-one accounts that we're asking you to write off was over three thousand dollars. That was a residential customer that was a tenant of a landlord, and actually worked with her. She had about two months' worth of ninety thousand gallon bills, and the landlord did not fix her leak, she ended up moving out. So then, she can't pay a three thousand dollar bill, so now we're stuck with a three thousand dollar bill. So the, the finance committee had some, some questions and good suggestions, so I'm gonna do some research on what we can do about those types of situations with landlords who aren't fixing repairs. So anyway, that's what that one item was.
You see, I looked over at Mr. Mecklen, and he raised his eyebrows. You might talk to him, but we'll see. Okay, I, I'm just picking on you, I'm not asking you anything. All right, are there any more questions? All right, I'm going to, if there are no objections, I'm gonna make this C twenty-one. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to tab H, and the ever-long-winded Mr. Barber. H one, Community Foundation of West Georgia Designated Pass Through Fund Agreement. Go ahead. Who's doing it? All right. Ms. Alyssa will present this.
Yes, good evening. You have in front of you a request to approve the, excuse me, got a frog in my throat, the designated pass-through fund agreement between the Community Foundation of West Georgia Incorporated and the Friends of the Villarica City Cemeteries, and also approval to transfer five thousand dollars from the cemetery fund to the foundation. To open up a fund agreement with the community, it does require a minimum deposit of five thousand dollars. Just a little bit of background, we did organize our volunteer group in October of twenty-twenty. We called it the Friends of the Villarica City Cemeteries, so that residents would understand which ones we're talking about. And our group's a little bit different than the Cemetery Commission because we actually get out there and do the work. We have about fifteen members right now, so it is growing, and we work to preserve, maintain, and improve the city cemeteries with a lot of cleanup projects, repairing the graves and tombstones and landscaping. And you may not know, but most of the time, we have to hire an outside expert to repair these tombstones. They require special equipment and special materials, and it's something that city staff really cannot do, to get it back to almost the shape that it was to begin with, to make it hold. So, you know, money is needed for that, and the good thing about the Community Foundation, they will hold those donations forth, and anyone that does donate money, it is tax-exempt. The Friends of the City Cemeteries, we cannot be a 501(c)(3) until at least three or four years, so we're unable to do that. But anyone or company can go through the Community Foundation, through the website or Melachack. You can also make a donation and honor someone or in memory of someone, and those funds will be used just on the city cemetery improvements. So my recommendation is to approve the agreement. David Mecklen has already taken a look at this. If you actually go to their website, you can see all the organizations that you can donate money to, and the Friends of the Villarica Public Library is on there as well. So that way, the donors can have a tax-exempt donation. So the recommendation is to approve the agreement between the two and to transfer the five thousand dollars to open that fund.
So the five thousand dollars is essentially the minimum amount required to open?
That's correct. We have to do that.
Would you, would you be maintaining a minimum of five thousand dollar balance in the account at all times?
Yes.
Okay. So let me just say a couple of words about the city clerk. I think that she spends a lot of time on these cemeteries and, and does a lot of work, and she's a great advocate for the city cemeteries. And it, it, there's rarely a day that I go into City Hall that she is not telling me about something going on with the city cemeteries. And these, these cemeteries belong to the city, they're our responsibility, and oftentimes, when you go to visit these sites, they are in bad shape, but she knows better than anybody. So I think this is a, a great vehicle for her to be able to continue finding ways to pay for this, and I just wanted to say kudos to you, Alyssa. I know that that is a, it's another of the many thankless jobs that go on around here, but I wanted to say thank you and, and for your hard work and dedication to those cemeteries. All right, council, does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, I'm sorry. Well, I guess my thing is, the agreement is between the Community Foundation of West Georgia, Inc., and the Friends of the Villarica City Cemeteries, which I understand is not an incorporated organization, but I'm trying to get the connection between the city and the Friends of the Villarica City Cemeteries, though, I guess, if it's not a...
Let's give Mr. Mecklen to talk about that just for a minute.
Yeah, I, my opinion is, I think that the city needs to be a party to the agreement also.
Okay.
I mean, I think we just need to be a third party to the agreement, and I don't think there's any objection to do in that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, okay. I guess that'll resolve my question, yeah.
Can you take care of that if we, if we make this a consent item?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if there are no objections, I'm gonna make this C twenty-two. All right, thank you, Alyssa. Let's move on to H two, resolution to indicate support for roundabout at intersection of Highway seventy-eight and Highway sixty-one Industrial Boulevard. Mr. Barber.
Shortly after I arrived, I had a conversation with District Six staff of Georgia DOT, and was told that they had initiated a study of the sixty-one seventy-eight intersection because they believed that the traffic throughput did not equate to the amount of asphalt. In other words, there were more lanes than they were getting cars pushed through, and they wanted an engineering firm to look at that and come back with a recommendation. Subsequent to that, several times, we have approached GDOT about a left-turn traffic light at Rocky Branch and seventy-eight. Unfortunately, because of the nature of that intersection, it only gets used about twenty minutes a day. So when school lets out, there's a bunch of left turns, and other than that, it's, it's pretty, pretty sparsely used, and would, will never, ever meet the left-turn warrant requirement for a traffic light. So somehow or another, the two got melded together, and what has come out of the recommendation from the engineering firm is a roundabout at both intersections. So the first one you have is a letter of support, a resolution of support for the sixty-one seventy-eight intersection, and then the next item, the Highway seventy-eight Rocky Branch intersection.
All right. Council, does anybody have any questions for these? I know these have been talked about off and on, outside of this setting, but do you have any questions for Mr. Barber? All right, if there are no questions, you essentially covered both of these, is that right?
Right.
All right, so I'm going to make these C twenty-three and C twenty-four respectively if there are no objections.
They were on at Highway sixty-one and seventy-eight, that's gonna be a fairly large roundabout, is it not?
Huge.
Dozy.
Huge.
Very big, biggest one we can think of.
Maybe the biggest one I've ever seen, except maybe in Washington DC, Dupont Circle is, it's like three lanes, I believe. Okay, let's get to H four, approval of streetlights along Mirror Lake Boulevard. Mr. Barber.
We were approached by a certain councilperson about taking a look at improving the lighting along Mirror Lake Boulevard, south of the red light at Shoreline Parkway in Punkin Town. Bobby contacted both Georgia Power and Greystone. Greystone came back with the better of the two pricing options. We're proposing eleven new lights to be installed. It's gonna cost us some money one time, which is primarily, you know, why it's before you, even though it's not ten grand. There's a, there's a monthly tag on this, too, and I just felt like, when a councilperson asks me for something, that's a request, and when y'all approve it, that's a decision. Okay, so this is why I'm bringing it, even though it's under the, the ten-grand threshold.
And you have checked with the, the right-ofways over there, and how much of that, the city has a right to put these lights on in terms of the golf cart path?
I have, I have not. I know what the easement's gonna be, have to be. They gave me a drawing, and so that'll get worked out. You saw, saw that that stuff's blank in here, so we're gonna do all that once you approve it.
Okay, well, I, you know, this is a, a section of path that is not lighted. It's also in an area where it backs up to some woods, and we've had some other safety issues over there before with regard to wild animals. So I think that it is a public safety issue, and I, I can support that. I just was unaware about how far out that right-ofway went, and whether or not the city even maintained that portion of the golf cart path. But if you are comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with moving forward. Mr. Young.
I was gonna say, I think that might be city property because it's code enforcement picks up political signs in the, in the area, they're gonna put those signs. Punkin Town, Mirror Lake is, is what, a fifty-five-foot easement? So it probably covers that area.
Okay, are there any other questions on this item? If there are not, I'm gonna make this C twenty-five if there are no objections. All right, let's move on to H five, adoption of a resolution to participate in debt. Go ahead, Mr. Barber.
When, when we met with the Carroll County folks about the upcoming Sploes referendum, we asked them if it would be possible for part of the project list to be handled through a preemptive debt issuance, so that we could do the, part of the six years' worth of projects upfront. As it turns out, the county was interested in borrowing part of their Sploes proceeds to do some projects at the very beginning of the six-year period. So they have invited us to participate, up to four million dollars, in their forty-million-dollar issuance. What that will mean is that we're gonna have an interest expense that we would not incur if we were to just wait and do this pay-as-you-go, but it looks like that the bonds are gonna, are gonna be issued with a pretty significant premium. So my recommendation is that we do participate. This will allow us to look at a road project right from the get-go, instead of having to wait, you know, at least three or four years into the six-year Sploes term before we could do anything.
Okay, I don't think we're going to put this on the consent agenda, but I, I do want to see if any councilmembers have any questions. We will take this up in regular session. Does anybody have any questions at this stage?
What exactly does four million dollars buy us?
We're hoping it's gonna give us the money to do the safety improvements on Punkin Town.
That pretty much demolish what we have and replace it with?
Right.
We have to go all the way down to the dirt, right?
We may have to do some elevation adjustments, where we have a really steep shoulder. We'll, we will even look at doing curb and gutter, and possibly even sidewalk on one side. It just depends on the footprint. That's gonna be the, you know, the constraining factor. I mean, the money's gonna be constrained, too, but you've only got so much width that you can expand into in some of those areas. You cross a creek at one point, so there's a culvert that would have to be expanded.
It crosses the headwaters of Mirror Lake.
It's not, it's not gonna be inexpensive.
Talk about the, the scope of the project in terms of where it would begin and how far down.
We, we haven't determined that. If you, if you go out and ride it, the, the southern end of what I consider, what, I don't know what I consider it, Mirror, I guess what is Mirror Lake Boulevard, I don't even know officially where that stops and starts, but around the, the storage and, and Publix.
Right.
The width and the condition of the road is significantly different. As you, as you move north, there's actually guard rail on both sides of the road, and then, and then it gets down to Shoreline Parkway traffic light, and that's where things start getting, I think, where we have a safety concern. With the width of the road, the condition of the shoulders, if you drive through there today, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna see easily a half a dozen places with really large, long ruts where trucks have gotten off the road, which is just inherently dangerous. And if you remember the, the traffic accident that we had a couple of years ago, the, the beginning of that wreck was a truck going off the road and then over-correcting when they came back, and then crossing the yellow line and, and hitting somebody head-on. So it's really, in my mind, shoreline going north, past Old Stone, where we have a, a, a significant width issue of this asphalt. The other thing that makes, is gonna make this expensive is, as best as I can tell, there is no base in that road. It is, that road is a hundred percent asphalt, and I had it cored by a geotechnical firm, probably my first year here, and there are places out there where the asphalt's ten inches thick, where we, where we didn't mill, we just top-coated and top-coated and top-coated and top-coated, which isn't the way you do that either. But anyway, so we're not gonna know how much we can do until we start doing the design and an estimate, but I just went out there today with an engineer to look at it again. I wanna, if this, if this passes and you, if this passes, this item and the Sploes passes, I want, this will be, you know, something that we jump right on as fast as we can.
Well, and, and there are even more significant issues out there that I don't think we wanna talk about, about here, but this is, this is gonna be an extraordinary expense for the city. I mean, four million dollars is a lot of money for, how long is that, a quarter of a mile, half a mile, that just the scope of this? Either way, that is an incredible amount of money. We have to go all the way down to the dirt and rebuild the base of this thing. And there are areas, as he said, that there is not even really significant enough width of asphalt, and, and there's not much option there. That's where the, the additional cost is gonna come in. So just, just think about the cost of what this will be to the city. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I got one question, I'm sorry. Tom, do we yet have a estimate or projection on what our total, if, if the Sploes passes, how much we would obtain from the Sploes?
Nine million.
Okay, so roughly about, almost, a little bit less than half of it would go to this? Okay.
And then we spend about five hundred thousand a year on resurfacing, so that's three million over six years. So that's seven of the nine million would be spent just on road improvement.
Right. Okay, well, like I said, we're not gonna take this over to consent, so we'll bring this back into the regular session. Madam Clerk, all right, let's go to H six, the Three Rivers Commission Area Agency on Aging Contract for Services. Mr. Barber.
All right, I found this in my desk recently after a phone call to someone on staff from Three Rivers. This contract should have been This contract should have been approved la, late last spring sometime. I don't know if this is a combination of my desk, Vicky's departure, and COVID keeping Three Rivers people at home, or what, but however we conspired to do this, we didn't approve it, didn't even look at it. But this is, but this is the same contract that we've been operating under. It's on a state fiscal year cycle, so it's a July to June year, and you can see that the, the reimbursement amount is only covering material, it doesn't cover labor. So, the program that we operate, the city completely funds the labor portion of the program. This is, this is an expensive program that we offer, and unfortunately, with COVID, we're not making full use of our staff, because we're not doing really any programming other than the meals. So, it's a very, it's a very, both expensive and limited service that we're providing right now. But nevertheless, I think with the conditions that exist in the community, we need to, we need to pass this and keep going.
Well, all of those, you know, sort of indicators that you just laid out of why we might want to reconsider, or something we're going to have to do in the future, this is actually a, a, an agreement that should have already been implemented, that we're going to need to approve tonight, and this actually runs through, is it July or June of?
End of June.
Of '21. We may take up more discussion about this as we ease into the end of this one, but does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Have we been operating business as usual, even though we didn't have a contract?
We've been doing the meals part of the senior program, but, but all the, the in-person stuff that would normally be going on, we, we stopped that, I guess, back in March.
That's right.
So, when we, when we closed recreation and refunded everybody in the spring, we closed the library, we closed Senior Center, we closed Pine Mountain, all at the same time. None of the senior services has come back on, except the meals program.
The meals, because we continue to deliver and offer pickup for the meals program.
Right. But we've never reopened the dining room.
The facility. I, I just want to make sure that nobody thinks that we stopped doing those.
It's a very limited program now.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. So, I will make this C-26, if there are no objections.
No objection.
Okay. All right. We have reached the end of the agenda. How long did that take? Mr. Carter? Did I do good? All right. Does anybody want to add anything before we, before we adjourn the work session? Okay. And I guess we have no public comments. Let me open up for public comments. Is there anybody here? All right. Seeing none, I'll close that. If there, yes, sir, Mr. Barber?
You want to do the update now, instead of tonight, since you're doing State of the City?
What update?
Mine.
Would you like to?
Well, I'm just thinking, you're going to do State of the City, so...
Well, let's do it.
Because it's...
All right. So, we'll, we'll have the city manager go ahead and give his manager's update right now, and that'll save us a little time in the regular session tonight, since we did get... I'm going to give you like eight minutes.
All right.
I'm ju, I'm just kidding, sir.
So, so what we're passing down is drawings for the new splash pad. So, speak now, forever hold your peace. We are at the end of the conceptual design stage. And what you see here, on this first page, is the splash pad sitting on the old playground site. To the south of it, which is the bottom of the page, is the restroom building that also houses the filter pump equipment.
Let me, Mr. Barber, just, does, does the city clerk have this?
I don't, I don't think so. We just, we just...
Do you have a way for her to put it up? All right. Let's make sure we get it loaded for the public to see, okay?
We can, we can do that.
All right. Go ahead.
And then to the east, which is to the right, is the pavilion, and that's the metal shelter that Tracy was talking about. One of the constraints that we have is that if we go over 5,000 square feet of building and concrete, then we wind up with detention pond requirements, which we don't want to create. So, this is like 4,996 square feet of concrete or building rooftop, and then the, and then the, the sidewalk areas that you see that are lighter are going to be some kind of pervious material. The good and bad of that is it keeps us from doing the detention pond, but it costs two or three times as much as concrete. So, the more of that we do, the more costly the project is, but if we don't stay under the 5,000, we do a detention pond, which is not just one time, but, you know, an ongoing expense. If you look at the second page, on the right side, you're looking at a, sort of a top-down view of the restroom building. So, what we're proposing, starting at the bottom, is a men and women's restroom with a mechanical chase in between, with all of the plumbing opening to the chase. So, we should be able to maintain all the plumbing going forward without opening anything, right? You just go in the chase, and everything's exposed in the wall, because that wall is not going to be finished on the inside. As you move up, you've got a, a chemical room to the right, and a single-family restroom to the left, and then above that, you've got the filter pump room and the equipment to the right. And then what we're planning to do is a narrow vending area with a roll-up door. Does that make sense?
Where would that, where would that be?
The top-left corner.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it.
Right?
Yep.
And then, if you'll notice also, on the first page, we are planning to construct a sidewalk, a walkway, between the splash pad and the playground, and it's going to cross the drainage ditch. So, right now, there's a sidewalk and piping close to the parking lot, but there'll be another one on the east side of the, of the project. And what that's going to do is, if we have the restroom building open, even though the splash pad is not operating, people will be able to use the restroom from the playground, right? We'll be able to rent the pavilion on both sides, so you'll have a smaller pavilion here, the larger pavilion to the south, closer to flowers, and then that restroom could, could accommodate visitors at either facility. It will also possibly give us some relief during baseball season, because that park's really busy, and you've got a single restroom building on the baseball side. So, I'm excited about this. I don't know what, what your experience has been with these, but we built a splash pad in Fairburn, and I observed a static behavior on the part of like three- and four- and five-year-old kids that get hold of one of these. So, it, it's worth going out there. It will, it will young you up some, just to watch children play on this thing. They enjoy it so much.
I can vouch for, for that. Every time we, when Eli was younger, every time we would go to any place that had any water coming up out of the ground, I mean, that was an all-day deal, and I think that families will, will love this, and I like, I like the layout. Not that there's a lot of choice here, because given the, the topography over there, this is pretty much what you're going to get. All right. Does anybody have any questions on this item? If not, go ahead, Mr. Barber.
All right. So, most of the other things I had to report are updates on either projects or, or meetings that we've held. We have constructed the building out at the Old West Plant for distribution and collection to use, and our staff is out there now finishing the site with driveway and parking. We're hoping to be in that facility in a couple of weeks. The fence that I told you about, that we had ordered for the playground at the V-Plex, has been backordered, which is really inconvenient, but typical of what we're seeing everywhere because of COVID. If the delivery can't be pushed up, we're going to get the fence, but it's going to be in grass-cutting season, and I don't, I don't know what we're going to do then. So, I'll tell you about that when we figure out how we're going to handle that. But we were planning on using our grounds guys during the winter to do all of that work, and, and now it's not going to be here to, to make that possible. We are working, week by week, on the Clegghorn Anderson Road project. This is getting ready primarily for the apartments, but also for the Mirror Lake Connector concept. We're talking about water, sewer, road, sidewalk, stormwater, and the apartment plans, all being combined on each engineer's software, so that each engineer can see what the other guy's doing, trying to combine this into one project, so that we can design it together, and then build it one time and not have to change it. So, this includes a roundabout at the intersection of Clegghorn and Darden. It includes sidewalk on the east and north side of Clegghorn and Anderson. I mean, it's a big project. 10-inch water line, moving some sewer, expanding some stormwater. It's, it's going to be a good project, and when we get through, it will make the apartment and the neighborhood able to coexist, because you're going to add a bunch of traffic with, you know, 190-something units, so, and also water. The mayor and I, the city attorney, staff, continue to beat our head against the issue of available lots in Mirror Lake. We think we're unraveling it. I'm hopeful that before too long, we're going to bring y'all something that you can approve, that's going to get us going again, but staff continues to take the position that we don't have your authorization to issue more permits over there, except for the 81 units that we think are unused. So, that's, that's what we're operating from, that's the belief that we're operating from, and it may be that the attorneys have to decide if that's true or not before it's all over with. We received a letter from the Georgia Department of Revenue that certifies our property values for the TAD. What that means is that we are two steps away from having a TAD. We've got to go to the school system and ask for their participation, and we have to go to the county and ask for their participation. Once those IGAs are in place, we're, we're then making economic decisions, but all of the TAD preparation work would be in place. We have been approached by Georgia Power about the installation of two electric vehicle charging stations. They have a program in place. They, I think it's got a couple of million dollars in funding. They are picking cities around the state to do charging vehicle installation. If we participate, we would effectively be giving them two parking spaces in front of the Avante Building forever. They would be providing all of the construction, funding, and providing power into the future, but we would get no revenue out of it. So, they're doing this as a business decision. This isn't philanthropic, I don't believe. So, if you want to get more involved in this, as it, as it moves on, when I get the next, or the first submittal from them about specifics, then I'll bring it back, and we can, we can talk about that, or you can come see me, and we talk about it. We're continuing to work on an additional water source. Our options are not getting broader, but narrower as we go. We are working on another one now, that's a possibility, but I wish, I wish I was more hopeful, but this, this, this has been a real challenge. The Edge Road Water Line is in place. We are, we have done all the testing, and I think in another, what date? Was, Bobby here, another day or two? What? Okay. So, we're hoping to turn that line on today. The Highway 78 Water Line Extension is underway. I don't know, how long have we talked about that now? A year and something? Taking care of the, the folks on Leather's Road. Not everything that we've done has been totally impacted by COVID. One of the things that we've done recently is had a department head lunch together. We don't, we don't do that as often as we probably would like, but even, even with COVID, we've been, we, we got out and enjoyed a meal together. Staff has recently demoed two software systems that are primarily focused on the community development environment, so zoning, permitting, inspections, business license, and all that. So, we'll be bringing you something on that, once we make a decision. And last of all, several of us met with the four residents from Old Town Village to talk about that private failed neighborhood that is now completely built out, and you didn't get to watch this, but I, I got to watch the mayor in his wheelhouse, right? The mayor taught HOA 101, 102, 201, 202. I think he got up in the 400s there before it was over with. I mean, he really gave them a lot of money's worth of information, and I'm hoping that they're going to, they're going to take that and get organized now, finally. And I, I'm disappointed that Councilmember McPherson is not here, because she was in the meeting. She has voluntarily stuck her neck out to help these folks. No one, there wasn't really anything we could do. I mean, we can't undo the past, right? But combined, I think that Councilmember McPherson and the mayor have really helped these folks, and that we're, we may actually have a happy outcome of this over time. So, that's it.
Well, that sounds exciting. Okay. Let me, do you have any questions? Any councilmember have any questions for Mr. Barber?
I know on the, on the charging stations, Andy Hill and the DDA was also looking into that, so I'll let him know that you have made some headway in that regard.
I can't take credit for it. They called me.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Barber? Okay. Let me, so, Madam Clerk, just a, a note here to update the header. We have a new mayor pro tem, Mr. Michael Young, and I see that it's incorrect on both the work session and the regular agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That's what needs to be corrected on the website.
Okay. I haven't seen that. They'll get to it, I'm sure. Thank you, though. All right. I'm going to go ahead and go over the consent agenda, and if, if you hear anything different, please wait until I have finished to help me out, because it throws me off track. So, I'm going to add to the consent agenda as Item C-1, Appointment of Councilman Matthew Momtahan to the Villarica Development Authority to replace Councilman Danny Carter. C-2, Appointment of Councilman Michael Young to the Downtown Development Authority to replace Councilman Matthew Momtahan. C-3, Appointment of Tom Flowers to the Villarica Development Authority to replace Deborah Matthews. C-4, Reappointments to the Villarica Development Authority, John Mount, Dale Schwartzkopf. Item C-5, Reappointment of Cheryl Bell to the Library Advisory Board. C-6, Appointment of Nancy Mims to the Library Advisory Board. I will ask someone to move. Item A-7 to the next council meeting, we'll do that in regular session. Consent number seven will be fee schedule revision of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing Item number B-5, that also will be moving to the next meeting, so let's leave that on the regular agenda. Item six was for discussion only. So, consent number eight will be relocation of sanitary sewer from existing library lift station to a private lift station at Southeastern Trends' new facility. C-9, Purchase of 47 Ballistic Helmets from Safewear. C-10, Purchase Equipment for Filter Room at Gold Dust Splash Pad. C-11, Purchase of Shade Structures for Splash Pad at Gold Dust... C-11, Purchase of shade structures for splash pad at Gold Dust Park. C-12, Purchase of metal shelter for splash pad at Gold Dust Park. C-13, Approved vendor for baseball, softball, and football athletic uniforms. C-14, Approved vendor for soccer athletic uniforms. C-15, HVAC replacement at City Hall. C-16, HVAC replacement at customer service. C-17, HVAC replacement at Gold Dust Park. C-18, Emergency replacement of Bay Springs Lift Station Pump Number 1. C-19, Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendments Numbers 58 through 72. C-20, Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Amendments Numbers 111 through 112. C-21, Write-off Customer Receivables. C-22, Community Foundation of West Georgia Designated Pass-Through Fund Agreement. Item C-23, Resolution to Indicate Support for Roundabout at Intersection of 78 and Highway 61 Industrial Boulevard. C-24, Resolution to Indicate Support for Roundabout at Intersection of Highway 78 and Rocky Branch Road. C-25, Approval of Street Lights Along Mirror Lake Boulevard. C-26 will be the Three Rivers Commission Area Agency on Aging Contract for Services. So let me, I skipped H-5. H-5 will remain on the regular session agenda. All right, does anybody see anything different? Okay, so that will be our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, you got it? You good? Anybody have anything they want to add before I close out? All right, we will be adjourned.